Uh, the first one we have is number thirty-one. So, Councilman Priest, are you prepared for your discussion item?
Yeah, I I think IMS is here, um, or if there's someone from Public Works that's available to talk. I asked if we have this discussion item because I wanted to get an update on. We've got a number of drainage projects that are, I think of very pressing and flooding projects that are very pressing. Um, in the Presidential Hills neighborhood and uh, Woodhaven, uh, other places in the city. And I'd just like to know where we stand in terms of getting flooding and drainage projects addressed uh, under the one percent program. And generally.
Good evening. My name is Tommy Avent when IMS engineers. Uh, wanted to give you an update on the one percent. I didn't know exactly what you wanted. So what we did was we prepared a a brief presentation and it won't take long. But we're gonna gonna give you pretty much an update on what we are, what we are, what we've been doing for the one percent uh, program. So hopefully that'll cover your item pretty much. Um, you can go to the next one. So the thing that we're gonna talk about is that, of course, you know, this program been going on ever since uh, uh, two thousand fourteen. Uh, IMS, we've been a part of uh, the program management team ever since February of last year. We started working with the city, but uh, we wanted to kinda like give you a an insight on different things. The first thing that we're gonna talk about is for is the funds or the finances that you currently have. Uh, currently right now, uh, just just to explain, of course, you know that this cumulative total. Uh, uh, based on the funds that are are that are collected on a monthly basis. This is a a cumulative total of the amount that you have received since the program has been in place, which is forty forty-one point one million dollars. Uh, there's a a amount of thirty-one point one million dollars that's been obligated. And that's basically based on the commission meeting and also to the projects that that's been activated of uh, by the city council. You have thirty-one point one million dollars obligated. And this is in the packet that we gave to you as well, pretty much talking about the different funds that we're using. You can go to the next slide now.
Do you do you mind, Councilman Priest, can we chime in in the middle? I mean, during the presentation or can we just want to say it in?
You know, I just wanna hear about flooding and drainage. I I I'd just like to hear about flooding and drainage because that was the the real thrust following up on what happened. Was it three weeks ago? Um, but you're meeting.
Yeah, I I appreciate it. Thank you. Um, and I'm asking because we don't all all the time have the, I guess we have the opportunity, but we don't have update updates on the council. So, just walk me through the revenue. So, can you go back one slide? Alright, so we've collected forty.
Forty-one point one million.
Yeah, collected forty-one point one million, including the interest. We've obligated thirty-one point six. So, we essentially have a. We essentially have nine point nine or almost ten million dollars to spend that we can actually spend now on new on new projects.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay, so where are we? I guess you'll get this later on in your project and in your presentation. Um, but where are we on the thirty-one? On a thirty-one million dollar projects?
Yes, sir. We'll 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 give you a breakdown pretty much of what thirty-one point one million has been obligated.
Is it accurate that we have nine point one million dollars to spend when we, don't we have like? Tens of millions of projects where we have gotten them approved by the commission, but we are nowhere near that? It blows way past that forty-one point one million dollars?
Yes, sir. Well, well, the thing about it, uh, you gotta realize that uh, every time the city come here and and requests approval to award a contract to a consultant or a a contractor. That amount, and this is just, you know, hypothetically speaking, it could be a ten million dollar contract. You you're not gonna spend that ten million dollars that same day. So, as as every month, just like you just approved your claim docket and one of those contracts was Superior. Uh, they're working on the major street and that was eight hundred thousand dollar uh, uh, invoice that they had for that previous month. So, as as the the contractor or the engineer uh, perform the services, we we present that to the city and the city presented to the council for approval. And so, that that the the money that's obligated over the period of time, it will be spent. Once the once the uh, services have have been rendered.
Yeah, but we're just talking about you. I'm sorry, did you have something I wouldn't?
No, it's a, I I think we do ourselves, it's important for us to be very precise about this language. Because I think part of the problem right now is we're talking about, you know, borrowing this money and the money we're talking about. It see, it doesn't make sense to borrow money if you're saying, oh, we've got nine million dollars just floating out there for us free to use. I think we've got an issue of we've. We've got needs that have already been approved by the commission that out, as I understand it, far outstrip this forty-one point one million dollars. Am I wrong about that?
No, from what I understand, everything that's been obligated by the one percent sales tax commission is in that thirty-one point one million dollars.
That's correct.
Dollar amount. So, we don't have any any further obligations. We have nine million dollars that has that's unobligated that we currently have that we can use freely at this particular time. Okay, sorry.
Put a pin in this. Can we have a two minute?
Recession? Yep, two minute recess. We're now um, back into our meeting. It's coming to return. Um, yes, sir. So, back to um, my questions. Mr. Lewis, you ready? I'm sorry, okay. Um, so, we have thirty-one million dollars obligated.
Yes.
Okay, with so, we have nine point nine five six million dollars. That is not obligated, which means we have that amount specifically to spend or that can be spent on other projects.
Uh, that's correct.
Unencumbered.
Yeah, yes, can be spent on other projects or keep in keep in mind that thirty-one point one million dollars are it is is also it covers design costs, you know, so some of those projects, uh, there wasn't funds allocated for construction costs. So, that nine point nine uh, million dollars will go toward those project as well.
Okay, so, okay. Councilman Priest, you seem to be have some consternation about, so.
I think it's important for us to point out, and I I think what's left off this slide is that the commission has approved, was it thirty-eight projects? Now, while we've got this stuff obligated, there is still a huge amount of money where the commission has approved projects that are not touched at all here, that we've got, you know, I, the document I went to go grab for people. I think I it was given out last week to people. Um, was a list that Director Smash had generated that showed projects that had been approved that we have twenty-seven point four million dollars of need that's not addressed. And so, when we talk about this nine million unspent, it's not as though we don't have. I I think it's very important for people to understand that we have identified a laundry list of things that need to get done. The commission has approved and that it's not as though we have just nine million free and clear. And I think it's very important to, I I think that slide and this talk about we've collected this much, we've un left, got this amount unobligated. Makes it seem as though we've got nine million dollars in the bank to do with as we will.
So, so the point of clarity.
And I think we should, I think we should probably give some context to the the scope of the need that needs to be addressed. Because we've got a lot of stuff that isn't getting built. We're spending money on design, stuff isn't getting built.
No, no question about it, but I I think to your point, um, I don't believe that this in my, from where I see it, I think I might um, be a little more in the weeds than 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 normal. But this slide doesn't s- say to me that we don't have need, a great need in Jackson. What it says to me is that we have thirty-one million dollars worth of obligated projects that we haven't completed. And yes, we have nine million dollars in the bank, but we don't, we probably have, you know, five hundred million dollars worth of infrastructure projects that we need to get done to see that Jackson. So, I agree with you, what what you're saying, but I don't I don't see the, I don't see the the disconnect between.
I just think for future financial finding summary, funding summary, the the lines that need to be included on that slide are amount of projects approved by the commission so that people will get a feel for what's gotten through this process of being approved. So that we can understand that it's more like a hundred and nine million dollars of stuff that's been approved and the gap that we still have. So, I I just, let's move on, but I just wanted to.
Well, I I think it's important for us to have, we, this conversation is important for us to have, so all of us on the same page about the one percent sales tax uh, projects, the funds, and so we can uh, actively talk about it to our constituents.
It's it's also that we're in the process of trying to seek a very large loan. And people go, why are you trying to try and get this big loan if you've only spent thirty-one million, you've got nine million unobligated? So, I don't want us to lose focus on the broader financial picture.
My question is on, can you kinda give us what's included in this category of obligated?
Uh, yes, sir, and and that's that's gonna be on the next slide. As as we mentioned earlier, uh, this thirty-one thirty-one point one million dollars uh, is not covering all of your construction costs. It might be just covering a portion of the design costs, but you know, you've got another phase. So, every time the the city come to the council, the request for approval of a of a consultant or contractor, whatever the case might be, we consider that as a contract. Because uh, just also, so basically, this is a list of all the projects that you currently have that's that's active. Uh, right now, we have six drainage project, six contracts, drainage contracts that are active. Uh, five of those uh, uh, contracts are for design services. And you have uh, one that that is for uh, uh, construction services, uh, which is the Lynch Creek that is currently being constructed right now. Uh, but the those other uh, projects are in the design phase or and some of them are moving to the uh, construction phase, like for instance, you got the Brook Hollow Circle. Alright, well, you do, you did have a a a engineering consultant that did that project and that's his contract. Now, that project is currently being evaluated by the city, uh, and the program managers and and uh, at some point they're gonna, they're gonna come to you requesting for the board approval uh, to award that project to a contractor. And then we're gonna execute that contract to a contractor. So, just wanted to give you an example of how, what we have on here. So, what we're telling you is that we currently have thirty-two contracts through this program that has been executed. It might be design services or construction services, but you have thirty-two contracts. So, you got, and that's just pretty much a list of all of those that you have there and that's in your package for your review or whatever. So, this this is where that thirty-one point one million dollars that you have, that's where it comes from.
What's the difference between the ones in blue and the ones in black?
The ones in blue are the ones that that was there. As I, as I mentioned, we were here, we came on board and uh, last year, around about February. So, those projects was uh, pretty much ones that had been uh, activated prior to us being here.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, and I think this also brings us to the point of us getting a understanding and being to a point of resolve on the role of the commission. Because I don't believe that the commission should pick projects. I believe that they should oversee the execution of the funds and things like that. And as a group, we need to be on one accord on the role of everybody's position in this matter. Because we are the, we are the purse string holders. The executive branch does their piece, the commission does their oversight piece, everything rolls fine. But when you get in other folks' lane, you get run over. And I think that as a group, we need to be on one accord of an understanding of the commission's role. Because right now, we're just going through a process of the commission approving projects. And I want to know that my council colleagues comfortable with that process.
So, I'll 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 say, Councilman Foot, go ahead.
To me, it just comes down to what the legislation that set up the commission says.
Oversight commission, it's not an execution.
That's more than just oversight. It just, what what it articulates, that's the way it needs to be done.
No, the 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 legislation does not say the commission picks projects. It said it approves a master plan and then it moves forward. So, I don't know if we need to get a copy of the legislation to all council folks to review. But as a group, we need to be on one accord on the roles of everybody's position in this matter. So, as we go through this conversation, colleagues, if there was ever a conversation that we need to be on one accord about, it's this conversation about what is the, I'm not saying the Keith or Stamps's position or Mr. Tillman's position. What is the council's position on the roles of this one percent? Because it's gonna get, you know, even thicker as the years go on. And we're clouded with misunderstanding and misinformation. At this point, we're starting to set the trajectory of this whole project going forward right now. So, we need to get on one accord of what the council feels that the roles of this two hundred and forty million dollars is gonna look like, uh, practically.
So, I'll 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 say this, Councilman Stamps, um, because I do, I do believe it's important for us to all be on the same page, at least on the same page with the premise, and we'll diverge from there, of course. But I agree with Councilman Foot. I think we, the commission was created by the legislature, legislature. There's this piece of legislation that's there and more than anything else, what it says is the one percent sales tax commission is to approve uh, one percent sales tax master plan, infrastructure master plan for the one percent sales tax. And we go from there. Now, has that been done? I don't, I don't think so, not a master plan. And so, what is the, what's the in-between? I I'm not an attorney. Um, and I think that's that's probably a conversation that we should probably have with our, um, with our attorneys. But in the absence of, the question is, in the absence of an infrastructure master plan, what then? Because we don't have one.
Well, they've been presented. I mean, we need to just get on one accord with this.
I I'm not, I'm just asking a question.
This might be getting outside the scope of the discussion item.
It's one percent sales tax.
It's one percent sales tax, trying about talking about drainage and flooding. We have gotten, we stand the risk of having a very long philosophical discussion here that I'm not sure if this is the the right time. I I appreciate you putting it out there, but I think this might be, you know. I wanted, I put this item on the agenda because I wanted to have an answer about flooding and drainage and to what extent we have flooding and drainage dealt with. So, I'd like, I'd like to stick in the scope of of that if we can.
Oh, no question.
I got a question about, specific about flooding and drainage.
Oh, yeah, of course. I I just wanna say, the reason I I can, I guess my mind went somewhere else is because it came with a presentation.
They did.
And two, it has one percent sales tax on the discussion item. Um, Councilman Stamps.
Oh, the Works Department. Have we increased our capacity to handle spot flooding issues? For example, when you go down the street and you obviously see there's a a clogged storm drain. Have we invested any resources into increasing our capacity to fix that? You know, and and I think, let's go down back.
Okay, so, basically, when you ask that question, you're asking with respect to this one percent discussion or overall?
Right, because I believe that a portion of these one percent funds should be used to build our internal capacity. I hear that there was a lengthy discussion about that, so I I appreciate that, but for the benefit of the public who was in that work session yesterday, we're just gonna talk about, because our internal capacity needs some help. You've expressed it over time. Um, and part of the master plan needs to be to put Public Works back to work.
From the standpoint of the of what we're doing with the uh, one percent of the work that's been done, it has primarily been project work related to uh, drainage, um, what you're you're talking about. Because some of the issue that we've had, it still goes back even to what we talked about with streets, with paving. You know, there was a need to get equipment. So, we're in the, kinda in the same boat, but we are constantly in flux. And we're working with chicken or the egg because to build crews, as we've been trying to do for years. Um, uh, because a good portion of my time, even through other administrations, I've seen the difficulties of trying to actually build up the crews, have the equipment, not have the equipment wear out on you before you can actually replace it. So, all of that is actually being taken into consideration outside of this because it it just has not been a part of the construct. I think there was, there were question marks about the equipment that was to be purchased originally as we went through this process. And so, as a result, we really didn't put, hang our hat on being able to do that, uh, and purchase additional equipment. Uh, at the same time, we do recognize that we have had, you know, active staff positions available that we budgeted to fund, but that just has not come to fruition.
And the last question I have in that regard, Mr. Smash, is to talk about a proposal to raise, to change the pay structure for that department so that Atmos and everyone else can stop just recruiting on the job site in a lot of these regards. So, you know, I would ask that we look at that structure, because if there was ever a pay structure needs to be raised, it's that one. Because we're losing revenue, we're losing time, we're losing personnel, basically on the job sites in in Public Works. You know, guys saying, hey, you're making nine dollars an hour. I'm here from Atmos, you know, put your, put your shovel down, you come work for me tomorrow. And that's what, that's what I see is happening, you know, and and that's a bad thing for the cities.
We've been discussing, discussing, making recommendations for a long time. Uh, we we we, no work, work need to be done, no doubt about that. And that's what the one percent sale tax. Well, of course, the, all the, all the, all the issues of projects and needs in Jackson was identified. You know, to pass the one percent sale tax. Now, we got the money. People wanna see work done. I wanna see work done. Now, the the question is, what's standing in the way? What's standing in the way? We got the money. Somebody, somebody please answer that question in in the next couple of days. Just lay it out.
And maybe answer tonight, because I mean, there is the, there is the question. That's the question. So, we, and thank you, Count, thank you, Councilman Tillman.
I ain't agreed with you all night.
Um, so, yeah, we do have this thirty-one million dollars that's been obligated. What's the problem? Is there a, what's the challenge, I shall say, putting more positive spin on it?
In my opinion, Rod Hill, President of IMS.
As factual as you can be.
Your problem is your commission.
Okay.
That's your problem.
Okay, so, in that thirty-one million dollars?
They're not, they're not in sync with this council and with this administration. And therefore, it creates barriers and challenges, just like Councilman Stamps said. You guys gonna have to take more interest in what's going on over there. Because they're trying to establish policies where they are establishing policies that leaves you out of the decision process. This last time I checked, and I've been living in this city for many years, this is the city of Jass. We can't have a certain group of people that think a certain way, making decisions on behalf of this city. That's what you guys supposed to do.
So, let me ask you this. So, I'm 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 gonna put a, put a pause there. My question is, out of the thirty-one million dollars that have been obligated, we've only spent how much? Can you go back to the to the money slide?
It's it's roughly what, nine point?
So, that's my question. So, so we've collected forty-one million. The commission has obligated thirty-one million worth of projects, right? We have spent nine million, correct?
That's what's been paid.
Paid. So, I'm saying, we, how much, okay, so how much have we spent out of the thirty-one million?
You paid nine point one million. You got another three plus million that's in the process to come before you for approval.
Okay, so my question is.
Roughly twelve million, once that go through the process.
Perfect. So, my question is, we have thirty-one million dollars been obligated. I think the question is, what's stopping us from using the thirty-one million dollars that's already been obligated? Because it can't be the commission, because the commission has already obligated the money.
Let me, let me answer it like this.
Yeah, go ahead.
Of that thirty-one million, you got over twenty million. Yeah, I think my numbers maybe, maybe a little off, but you got two, you got two primary contracts. That that is fifteen million dollars is is wrapped up in two major contracts.
Okay, what are those?
Paving contracts, Superior and APAC.
Yeah, I'm saying, what are the projects? Are those the the neighborhood streets?
You got, you got a hundred and fifteen neighborhood streets that have been paved under the the APAC contract, on the neighborhood streets. And 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 under the, under the, under the Superior contract, there's there's roughly what, five major streets that's under that contract? Six major streets under that contract.
So, we have the nine million dollars for the neighborhood streets and the six million for uh, the the, I mean, the thoroughfares?
You got fifteen, ten million for the APAC contract, five million for the 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 Superior contract. That's that's what's been approved as part of the commission's plan. Fifteen million dollars is tied up in those two major contracts.
Okay, perfect. And but those contracts, are those those term bid contracts that we that we discussed before? Right, so those are, those were actually supposed to be completed a long time ago, correct?
We had some delays.
Yes, major delays.
Yeah, we had some delays.
Alright, so that's my question. So, what's stopping us from getting the work done? So, we said the commission, right, but that can't be the, because I'm looking at the money that's been obligated and 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 given. And my question to the commission was, what projects have been given, have have been requested of you all that you all have not approved? And then I come and see the list of projects that's been approved, presented by the city and approved by the commission, and the two don't match. So, I'm asking what's stopping us from getting the work done, because the money and the projects have been approved by the commission. I watch the meetings and I go, so I mean, what 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 you're saying doesn't make sense. Good, come on, come on.
But but keep in mind, let's go back to what we were saying at first. When you look at the these projects, some of these projects are in the the design.
Phase, okay.
Alright, now it goes back to what uh, Councilman Priest was talking about. Now, so, say for instance, let's just talk about the drainage. You got six, the drainage projects.
Okay.
Currently, you just got one that's uh, on the construction, which is the Lynch Creek.
Okay.
And you get ready to go with the Brook Hollow, so but we got, you know, U-Banks Creek, we got U-Banks Creek Tributary. Uh, you got the the Bell Haven Creek, you got two uh, two uh, two projects in into one. And then you got Town Creek Tributary, so those projects are are at its phases of where they're gonna get ready to go to construction.
Thank you. Now, that, answer my question. Thank you. Okay, Councilman Stamps.
So, are we outside the allowable time limits for the actual construction portions of the projects that are on the table? Because I don't wanna rush through stuff and then we end up with poor quality work. So, are we outside the normal construction timeframes for constructing things? Because I know we don't pay money until, like Raymond wrote, until all the, all the, all the, the, the shoulders have been cut and the stuff been striped. We don't pay those contracts out until everything's finished. I know there's dirt everywhere, you know. So, are we outside the allowable construction timeframes for our projects?
Well, the 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 APAC contract uh, didn't, didn't follow the the contracted, the original contracted timeframe. So, we had to make, you know, we had to extend that at at some point to keep them working. Now, that was beyond the control of the city, of the program managers. That was just a business decision that APAC made that they'd rather spend their time working on another project that they felt would be more profitable for them. So, for all practical person, they put the city's project on the on the back.
Yeah, who constructed, who who constructed that contract? Was it the city?
Regardless of who constructed the contract.
But my question was who?
It's a city contract.
I understand. What I'm, what I'm saying is, who wrote the contract? Who who wrote the contract and who saw it through? Was it us, the city, Public Works? Was it a one percent sales tax? Um, um, uh.
It's a standard city contract that was used.
Okay. But that's what, I wanted to bring that to light, because some of the, sometimes the contractors choose which projects they want to move on and it's still within the allowable limit. So, to your uh, order that you had to push, tried to push forward months ago, how can we tighten the controls up within our contracting when we roll these things out that can make us a priority for everything? And we need to tighten that up to some degree, but that's a deeper question.
Yeah, no question about it, but I mean, I think also. Yeah, no question about it, but I mean, I think also what we have seen in, in, in common, as commonplace in contracts, and I think it's something we need to do internally, is when you don't meet the deadline, then the, the meter starts running on how much you need to pay back to the city. As though liquidated, whatever. Um, Jackie?
So to answer your question, I think, um, uh, Mr. Reddicks, who's no longer here, was tasked with putting the contract together. And she used, uh, the model of one of the surrounding cities or a couple of the surrounding cities to put it together. And that's what she based the contract off of. Now that, I mean, we've had some time now in this trial and error. I don't think when she was putting the contract together, she expected them to leave the job and go somewhere else and come back and finish, to her credit. But, um, that's what they chose to do. So we gave them a hundred and fifty, two hundred days. They took a hundred and fifty, two hundred days to do it, and I don't think that was the expectation when she was putting the contract together.
Thank you, Councilman Priest.
Wait, who put the contract together? She's not a lawyer?
Where's that answer? Where's the question?
Alright, look, I, okay, so what's the total amount of money of projects that has been approved by, how much money has the commission approved spending?
Ba- based on what they recently approved? The list that I, I reviewed, thirty-seven million dollars. That's what's on that list.
Okay, thirty-seven million, great. Thank you, I, I really appreciate it. And Councilman Tillman? Councilman Tillman?
It seemed, it seemed to be what, what's, what's the whole of this contractor's getting to be, start to work? And we'll finish the work on time.
That's it, that's the problem.
That's the main problem, that, that sitting here listening. Now, since we, you, you, you know, you, you, you learn. So, other contracts gonna come, uh, uh, other projects coming up for, for bid. How we gonna tighten it up? What, 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 what are we gonna put in the contract to avoid this? We know what's happening. How, 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 how can, how can we improve our contract? To make sure these things don't happen, the projects move, like they're supposed to move.
So if I could, if I could speak to that question, uh, again, it's, it's gonna be a matter of tightening up the contract. And you've got two options, you either incentivize them to finish sooner. And which is something that I prefer as opposed to trying to do something that's punitive. Um, it also did not help the situation that the time that the contracts were lit, even coming out of the bid process, was in the height of construction season. You also have to look at your timing when you put the contracts out. That's something that I think initially, and again, kinda sort of speaking for, for a time that I was not here. Uh, the thought was again, always to try to get the projects rolling as quickly as possible. And I think that there was a point where the team may have still been behind the eight ball and getting everything rolled out. When they did, you've got major construction going on all across the metro, all across the state. And you're looking at contractors that don't just do work in this state. They do work, uh, you know, I know Superior does work in other places as well, and they have other locations to be able to mobilize staff. So those are also considerations that you're doing. Um, it goes back to this entire discussion. I mean, ultimately, you're competing for resources regardless. And even when you secure, uh, people contractually, and we've learned some lessons, Dr. Williams and I have talked about this several times. You know, what can we do to make sure that in the future? Cause what you'll see on this sheet that, um, that we, um, have kinda the team put together. But, uh, Mr. Priest, uh, has kinda passed around. You know, these are items that, you know, we should be able to address because they were part of either the year one projects that were put out there or the others. And it's gonna be critical for us to look at our resources and make sure that we, you know, Operation Orange Cone is included in here, uh, for twenty seventeen. Those, we have more projects that we would like to look at, cause there continue to be street projects that we need to address. Just like to Mr. Priest's point, there continue to be drainage projects that we have to take a look at as well. Some of those drainage projects were removed from consideration, even though they were in the year one list because there were not available funds in the collections at that time. And that's what I think the slide intends to show, is that, uh, the collections may be at a certain point, but you still have projects that were basically approved, at least to go into design, that quite frankly, we ran out of money. Or because of timing, those funds had to be utilized elsewhere at the time to keep other projects rolling. And so now, uh, there are several projects that are available, and information has been presented. You know, IMS has presented it, Dr. Williams has presented it. And that is some of the basis along with, uh, the, the tiger funding, obviously, that we were looking for, uh, to get the leverage worked out. Um, because again, another point Dr. Williams has made over and over again, which I think is critical. If you're going to do capital projects, you have to have capital. And it doesn't pay for you to come in the way that this has worked because you had a year one collection of about thirteen point, I think, seven or nine million maybe. And I may be off, I think Michelle can probably help me out with that. But the point is, you had at least fifty million dollars worth of projects that we started off with. And you didn't have enough money to do all of those projects. So even though you get that list approved, you're having to move through it slowly but surely. And I think the original intent was also still to go after leverage to be able to accomplish that, because you would have to, otherwise you would have to wait years before you would get there. And you would have to piecemeal projects that while they may have some meaning, they don't have significance because they don't have any lasting value to you. And you don't wanna get, that's something that we've, you know, I think this whole program, the intent was to make sure that we didn't get caught up to where we had those issues to kinda trip us up. We wanted to do at least some things that were significant. We've obviously had urgent need during the way, uh, you know, Hanging Moss Bridge, Robinson Road Bridge. These are things that, um, I think there are points where we have seen some continuity between, you know, will of the administration, the council and the commission on those items when we brought them forward. I think there's an issue of how do we move forward, uh, with appropriate funding to get done, what we need to get done without the bottlenecks. And I think, you know, to your point and to your credit, you've pointed out some of the issues that we've had, but these are just, again, when you're in development and you're trying to really get the program going, this is some of what you come up against. And you know, there's been opposition, uh, again, to how some of the projects were picked and they were selected. But there are still needed projects. I think we had a, a good selection process. I was here for, uh, part of that. And that's not why I think it's good, but I think going out into the areas that are affected and finding out the projects that are front and center was a good way for us to get it kickstarted. But now that it's, it's rolling, um, you know, there's some more fine tuning I think we need to do. Um, to Mr. Tillman's point, we do need to address how we're, and, and all of your concerns about the contracts. I think we've learned those lessons, everybody has documented that, including legal. Um, I think the initial contract, there was a, it was a very good attempt. It is, again, is used in another municipality. Uh, when we talked to them, I won't name them here, but when we talked to them, they seem to have a similar issue. There is a similar, because they have work, they don't have as much work as we do. Uh, but it still kinda hit them because you basically only have the same crews doing the paving work. So they are, that's competition. Just like for us, if we're gonna get employees in that are gonna be able to, first of all, that want to do the work that we have to do in all of our areas, um, we're competing. So we're gonna, if we're not competing with the utility companies, we're gonna be, continue, uh, competing with these asphalt and paving companies. So all of that is critical for us to understand, you know, how we utilize the resources. And I think again, that comes, that brings us back to, uh, the critical issue here. And that is the leverage. And I just wanna kinda hammer that home, that we need to be able to utilize additional funds to make sure that we keep projects rolling. Because where those collections are, uh, there will come a point in time when, again, uh, administration, council, commission will probably be on the same page with projects. We will continue to, to work through projects. We just don't wanna get to this point again, where we have to figure out, what do we do to go forward?
My question is, when is the next tranche of, uh, one cent sales tax money um, deposited into the forty-one million dollar, you know, vessel?
It's, it's, it's done monthly. You, so that, that is updated, updated monthly, yes sir.
So we get, does it pretty much a million dollars a month then?
Approximately one, one point one million dollars.
Per month, okay.
Yes. And, and, I'm sorry, I, I, I just wanted, you know, also too, we wanna leave you on a positive note of some of the things that's going on. So what we wanted to do is also too- We're not ready for that yet, I'm sorry.
One more piece of leverage. When, I know we, like, we've been in the vein of going with larger companies because they have more capacity. But there are several other companies, if the projects were crafted smaller, could pivot faster and move forward. So if we could lower the bar, that would change the, the landscape of the competition from everyone. Because I, we're in the business of getting projects done, and there are smaller companies that, that, that we, if we could lower the bar some, could get into this work and do some of this work. But if when you, when you write these RFPs and these different things, if you make it so big that only a few people can qualify, then that lessens the pool of actual capable talent. But if you lower the bar and break it down a little bit, you know, instead of doing a project for a street, paying for a whole ward, you maybe need to break them down a little bit so smaller companies can jump in, and then they could be able to execute some of this work.
Last, last statement, please.
That's my last one.
I'm talking about mine. I, I know you're gonna talk. At, at, at the beginning of this, of, of, of this conversation about the one percent sale tax and, and, and the projects. I can give Councilman Stamps credit. He said, he said building capacity within. I know we got cover machines for pothole. How many paving machines did we, but, but, by, to build capacity in-house? Then, how many, how many streets are, are we paving right now with our, uh, with our, our group? In, in-house?
So the answer to the first question would be zero. Uh, in terms of paving equipment that would be purchased out of one percent so far. So we haven't done any of that. In-house, we pave, we don't pave significant stretches often, but we have done it. We have definitely done it on, under my watch. The issue that you get into with our paving is that you have to make sure you can do, you know, the curb and go to work as well. So you have to be very selective about the work that we do. But on a regular basis, uh, Leroy Lee makes sure that his staff has select locations on a daily basis that we go to, whether it's potholes or if we are following up with utility cuts. So we are trying to do that. But we do have a significant backlog of utility cuts. In terms of like entire streets, it's very rare that we will do that in-house. Because that goes back to, we can do maintenance. This becomes more of construction projects in some areas. Um, one of the key reasons why we don't do that is because we don't mill. We currently don't, don't have a milling machine and we don't have that capability. So what we have to do is make sure that from a construction standpoint, the road is stable enough for us to just go back and resurface.
I'm gonna hug Ms. Tillman today.
That, that's twice.
Thank you. And all I can say, we can pave all we want to. Outside of company, but, but we still got to maintain it. And we don't maintenance, things, things gonna help us, we're gonna be in the same shape when we finish. We, 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 we're gonna be looking back.
We spent forty-one million dollars and I even bought a shovel in the house, and I think that's the problem.
Bought a pothole machine, pothole paving machine. Um, I, I get your point though. Councilman Priest.
What's their total budget for road maintenance outside of one percent money?
In terms of paving or just overall?
Just overall road maintenance?
I would ha- I'd have to get that. I don't have it on top of my. You ju- you're talking about just for asphalt?
For road maintenance, whatever you would term in your universe's road maintenance, how much of our non-one percent money?
A one point seven?
That's a ballpark.
You're talking about just from a maintenance budget, because in the maintenance budget, it's paved streets.
The whole, the whole package, anything that you would think that goes into making sure a road is drivable, if, if it's putting in. Cause, cause, look, one of the things that I think people ask is, in terms of do this project, do that project, is they wanna know, how much are we spending, if this project didn't, one percent didn't exist, how much would the city of Jackson be spending on road maintenance?
You know, this, the council awards typically in the past has provided a one mil to go into resurfacing. I don't think that has happened in the past, what, two years?
I thought we did that this year.
Okay, I will verify, I don't know if it went into two thirteen. But, but typically that has been used for resurfacing, okay? In the maintenance budget, that would be somewhere around four hundred to five hundred thousand. That would include salaries, equipment, uh, and just routine maintenance as far as potholing and, um, utility cuts.
About one point five million dollars for the whole city. And that's a whole budget. We could triple our budget with, with the raising of our hand right now, you know, with some of these funds.
Alright, let me, let me, let me, let me other, I just wanna make sure my notes are clear. How much do we have lined up for Operation Orange Cone for neighborhood streets? How much is already in the hopper?
Uh, the current amount, uh, is fifteen, uh, million dollars that we have that, that, uh, that was obligated. And that's with, that, that's with major streets and also to, uh, neighborhood streets. So, so as far as ne- neighborhood streets, you, you, you currently have a contract of nine point seven million dollars right here, uh, that we, we're using. Uh, and that, that's a total of roughly around about thirty-six miles of road, uh, improvements. Um, and, uh, let me see, as far as, and th- those are some pictures that I wanted to show you guys and everything, to leave on a positive note. Uh, for, for the major streets, uh, you have, uh, four point five million dollars, uh, and it's a total of ten point, uh, three eight miles.
Alright, so. So you're, that's how you get to the fifteen million, give or take?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Alright, cause I'm, I'm trying to, you had the slide earlier, and that's why I was confused about that. Because I, I added up the, A, I don't understand why war two is at the bottom of the totem pole. Well, you're not doing the Tiger Grant anymore apparently, so that seems to be dying on the vine. Um, and the, what I get is ten point five million if I add up what the neighborhood streets and major streets are on that chart you gave.
Yeah, you're talking about spent, or you said, you're talking about spent or obligated?
Includes planned under contract. I just wanna understand.
You trying, you trying to track what's budgeted for neighborhood streets?
I'm trying to figure out the, the math on neighborhood streets and major streets under Operation Orange Cone.
What's budgeted by contract is nine point six million, but what's in the commission approved list is ten million.
Say that one more time, I'm sorry.
The approved list from the commission. That's the latest list that they put out.
Okay.
It's ten million dollars for neighborhood streets. But what was contracted with, with APEC was nine point six million, it's nine point seven million, nine, seven, six, five.
So still roughly ten million, roughly, okay.
It's good, let's move on.
Yeah, I do have one question, well I mean, it's 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 important and thank y'all so much for your patience, really appreciate it. I mean, it's it's a very touchy issue with with us on the council because um. By no fault of your own as we see and not y'all's fault either. Um but you know, we, I had a war six town hall meeting about a year and a half ago. These streets were laid out on a, on a postcard, these streets about to be done, these gonna be paved. And a year and a half later, we were still in the same position waiting on those streets to get paved. Alright, so this is a touchy issue with us because the timetable, the timeframe didn't match what we, what didn't match our expectations. So I'm not gonna say what anybody told us, nor did it ma- match you all because you know, y'all wanted. Exactly, no one wanted it to take too long because we just didn't, but I do have a question, so go to the tiger grant slide for me if you don't mind. Tiger grant? Tiger grant slide? We have the worst streets, we've been losing for years. Um so on here, it says, alright, we got additional three million in funds. The city is not required to have all funds for the total construction costs in the begin. Explain that, explain bullet point number two for me. Well, uh uh FHWA, Federal Highway Administration, they give you options as far as as as. Uh making sure that you have your monies, uh your match. Okay. Uh so basically what, this is gonna be a LPA project, a local public agency project. And based on that, uh uh you're gonna be invoicing on a uh monthly basis. Or the contract gonna be invoiced on a monthly basis. And when you submit that invoice to uh uh M dot R uh FHWA for payment. Uh they're gonna reimburse you back your twenty percent based on that invoice that's being invoiced. So, so what they're saying is you have to make sure that you have the money to pay the contractor during that time. And when they reimburse you, they'll reimburse you back your your match. Okay, so. Someone's like pay, I'm I'm not engineers, so it's almost like pay pays you go? Pretty much, yes, but it it's it's, they they look at it as reimbursing, reimbursing you your your monies back. Of course, I'm saying, but in terms of for us as a city, you got something to say, Mr. Day?
Yes, the city is required to have their matching funds in place prior to entering into a contract.
Okay, so the city is required to have all matching funds.
The state has one set of requirements, the city has internal requirements that we have to have the matching funds in place.
Okay, so what does the state say? The state says that, but the city, us, we say.
Before we can enter into a contract, we must have our funds in place.
And that's an ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, can we pull, can we pull the ordinance for me, Ms. Ms. Jackson, uh so we can have it ready for tomorrow? Um thank you so much, I appreciate that. Um and for the purpose to tiger grant, cause I don't think we wanna lose money and I don't know where we are with this loan. Um that may be something we have to revisit as a council, but I thank you so much for for bringing that to my attention. Uh okay, go ahead. Oh, Councilman Priest, go ahead.
You know, I, I'm a little frustrated right now, cause I sit in meetings where we explain over and over and over again. Why it makes no sense to try to do a project if we don't have the funding lined up before we begin. And now the people that are telling me that over and over again in meetings, except for Ms. Day. Seem to be really quiet right now, that this is really frustrating to me because it makes no. Sense for us to start these projects if we don't have the funds that we know to get it done.
And so we need fourteen million dollars, correct? Is that what the, is that, is that what we need?
Yes.
Okay, and the projected time, when's the projected time for these projects to be finished?
The deadline on finishing the projects is uh two thousand nineteen.
Two thousand nineteen, so essentially a year and a half.
Yeah, but we have to, you know, we we have to begin, I think we talked about, uh the expectation is for us. Yeah, we have to, we have to meet the milestones starting with June seventh.
No, agree, so the question is, do we need a total fourteen million dollars right now or do we need over two fiscal years? That's one of the questions that we have to have, right?
Well, I think from, and to kinda talk to what Councilman Priest said. I think I've been consistently vocal in saying we need to have the money to begin with.
I think all of us agree with that, right?
Because, right, but I, but I think the, just just for clarity, just to say it. And just to echo what Ms. Day said about initiating the contracts. And that's really why we talked about being able to have the money upfront from, because from our vantage point with it being reimbursable. We again get into the process of receiving invoices that have to come to us. And then have to go to M dot and then Federal Highway so that we can then get reimbursed.
It could take four to ninety days, I, no, I get you completely, no. I'm looking at, my purpose of asking that, one is I wanna read the ordinance for myself. Uh two is I think we gotta explore all of our options, right? So if it comes that down to the, to the, um to the point to where, look, we we love, we would love to have a tiger grant. But we don't have the money, and we just, we don't have the money, right? And I think that's, that's a bitter pill for all of us to potentially swallow, but that's just where we are right now.
Well, if I can, I just wanna throw this out here, cause here's the, here's the ramifications of losing this. And I guess I I hadn't said that on record, but maybe, and maybe I have. Yeah, because down the line, any federal funds that we go after, we will not be taken seriously. And I just, I have to say that because why that is critical. Uh is because we had an instrument in place that we felt like would provide the resources for us to be able to complete these projects. Otherwise, we never would have submitted for them. Um just like we did with the MPO funds. And recognize, we put out a lot of projects that affect several wards that get, did get awarded. So there was never an expectation that we would not get them and we would not be able to proceed with them. So I just wanna be clear on that, our vantage point, you know, as a department was to participate in this. Because quite honestly, what we could end up with with the amendment is just about twenty million dollars. On top of money that we already have in federal funds that we don't feel the city can afford to lose. And I think that's been our urgency in talking about doing the leverage because this needs to happen. That's, that's our point and I, and I do also know, and and I will see what little time I may have on this. To just say that, you know, I recognize that there is uh this perception about the wards that are impacted. But let, I wanna be clear that as we looked at this, as we do and we are tasked with all the time. To specifically look and make sure that we are as balanced as possible with the projects going forward. So I think we can show in every case that we have made a commitment to wards. And we can go down, we can name streets, cause I've seen the lists, I've seen the areas, I've driven some of those roads as well. To make sure that uh we're balanced in that. So whereas I know that that there might be an issue with the location, I think for us, it's like everything else. We don't just look at this in terms of projects, this is about implementation. I don't look at ideas, it's our ability to actually get stuff done and will be measured by the, as a city. The city will be measured by that for years to come, so.
Well, I agree, and and this is my last few comments on this and Councilman Stan should can close it out. Look, my, I agree with you a hundred percent. If we do not move forward with tiger grant opportunity, it'd be devastating for the city, not just for that, have long lasting ramifications before the city of Jackson. Which is why I think it's important for us to explore all of our options in securing funds or moving forward with these projects. Um so all options have to be on the table, in my opinion. Um in terms of to make, ensuring that we secure the funds or have the funds available before we, before we apply for the grant. We obviously didn't do it because if we did, we had the money right now. The, there was no, nowhere in the foreseeable past, what I, from what I looked at, that we. Um and we've been talking about it for a long time, we have to go to the bond market, go to the bond market, go to the bond market, but we didn't and we waited late. And now we have one bank out of eleven that we went to for, for this, what, eighty, sixty to eighty million dollar uh loan. That we're looking at from a bank, right? And now we uh once again have our backs against the wall. Hoping in the last thirty seconds of the fourth quarter to score baskets, score three point and put us in overtime, right? And I'm, I'm, no, no, that's the truth, I mean, they're just totally say what it is. If so, we went to obligated thirty one million dollars out of forty. Alright, I'm done, thank you, Councilman Stan, you can finish it up.
We allowed ourselves to lose this tiger grant funding years ago for the same area. West Carolina Road, that was a project during Harvey Johnson's first time. But it wasn't tiger grants, it was, but the funding for that. Right, but but now, it would be devastating for us to lose these funds, we should just might as well just stop going to DC once a year and asking for things. And if we don't execute these things now, um that's why I, we need, I said in the beginning. We need to get an understanding of the roles that everybody plays in this thing and get it ironed out. Because it's affecting operations and it's affecting execution of government and that's beyond the public works director and the program manager. It's between the legislative branch, executive branch and the commission needs to sit down and and define the roles. Because, you know, that's why I've been a firm believer in taking the politics out of government, because we gotta get work done. And it's too many, it's too much politics in the mix of this thing. And we just gotta call it what it is, it's too much politics in the mix of the money. And we gotta move beyond this and the only way we can move beyond it is with understanding. Uh legal, ironed out, A, oversight is oversight, fiduciary is fiduciary and execution is execution. To me and my, and my rudimentary thinking, that's basic, oversight's one side. And then they issue a report based on their findings, send it to the legislature, send it to the governor or somebody of their findings of their oversight. But fiduciary is fiduciary and execution is execution. So I believe that we should do fiduciary, y'all should do execution and they do oversight. And I think that's a basic balance of understanding for me in this matter. And I believe that we as a council need to voice our opinions because we're the ones in charge of the money, not the commission, not the mayor. We are, so as a group, we need to step forward and say, this is. I don't know if it would be in the form of a resolution or whatever, but we need to decide what is our position on the roles of this as a body. So we can move forward and rein this thing in.
And I think people are willing to have some more discussions. And I think, I think we can work this out. Um you know, I think with regards to this loan, that there are certain things that, you know, the due diligence process in ways of. Some things were outside the scope of our response, our ability to prevent. That there were certain documents in the due diligence process that the state of Mississippi doesn't keep. And that made things take longer. So I, it's late, we're tired, I think we're sorta going in circles.
I agree, thank you. Uh Councilman Tim, did you have something to say?
Sitting in all the meetings and the conversations I've had with people asking the question. About the tiger gr- gr- grant. And my. Thought process always been, it it would be detrimental to this city to lose that grant. Uh you you know, we we we, we seek funds. Write uh wr- write grants and get them approved. And then they die. As 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 money scrap as we are now. Everybody that's concerned about the city of Jackson. Could also be concerned that we don't let this money go back. Looking at the possible means of getting the matching money. It it's a question. And if we, if if we didn't identify these are the possibilities and let it be known strongly to this community. And if, if if whoever, whatever situation is blocking the process of getting this funding. All be known. Because if if the money is not used, who gonna take, who 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 the community could complain? You all this, you all that. You all is pushing to get the funding for the tiger grant, period. I don't know how, how many holes we gonna have to dig, how how many toes we gonna have to step on? How many mindset need to be changed? But we get with. The time is running out. And we had a ball, what we go to, throw a Hail Mary and and hope. And then if we, if 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 we lose, we all gonna sit a lot, sit around and. Put a, hold our heads and like football, team that lose, or any other team that lose. Who the coach? Let's go to work, thank you.
So thank you, Councilman Tim, um last question, is, um how much did the, out of that fourteen million that the city is is run for? Does that take into account the money that's been set aside by the commission for the tiger grant? Uh yes, sir. It does, so it would have been eighteen million or is is it? No, the the part of that fourteen million, I think that a portion of it is is in the, in uh obligated by the commission. Okay, so then we need, it would ever reduce that down to ten? Okay, that's what I'm, okay, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, appreciate it. Know it was uh touching meeting at times, but thank you for bearing with us. Thank you. Thank you all. Yes, sir, thank y'all for your time. Great, now we are um um going back to. Yes, sir, so, yes, sir, executive session, exactly. Um so going back to item number thirty at this point in time. I'd like to make a motion that we consider going to executive session. Purpose of litigation. Moving properly seconded, any questions or comments? All in favor? It's been uh confirmed now, need a motion to go into executive session. Second, moving properly seconded, any questions or comments? Item passes, we're not in executive session. We're now back from executive session and no action was taken. Um any further questions or comments or closings, anyone? None, uh? Yes, sir, uh announcements, yes, sir, announcements, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. On Thursday, April the twentieth, from six P M to eight P M. State lawmakers are hosting a community information discussion session. To discuss the capital complex legislature and the status of Jackson collection of a special one percent tax. To improve infraction. Everybody won't know about what's going on. Uh the meeting would be at Pearl Street, AMH at twenty five nineteen Robinson Road. Members of the one percent infraction sale tax commission, which oversees city spending of the farm. Are also asked to attend, now whether they attend or not. Uh contact Senator Solomon over six oh one, three five nine, three two two one for further information. On Sunday, April the twenty third at three P M, at University Park Neighborhood, no, I'm sorry. The University Park Neighborhood Association invite you to learn about tiny houses. And discuss how they might benefit West Jackson. Location, GSU Welcome Center, Dalton Street. Monday, April the twenty fourth, six P M, Washington District Neighborhood.